Thirteen meeting of Earlanger City Council order. Ask if you all please rise, I pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Longshore.
President.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudkamp.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
We have a quorum and may proceed. We all know where Ms. Sudkamp is and she didn't want to try getting out with whatever this weather is going to be later on tonight. You all should have on your desk and have received copies of the minutes of the regular council meeting of February the fifth, two thousand thirteen, the special council meeting of February the nineteenth, and the special council meeting of February twenty-sixth. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, our intent most to be adopted as presented motion by Mr. Longshore, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we begin our special presentation, we have another special presentation that she doesn't know about. Our former city clerk, Wilma Laverre is in the audience, who has a great granddaughter, I believe, right in front of me, in this music group. Today is Wilma's birthday. Am I correct? And today is an anniversary of her thirtieth birthday. Considering her service to the city, I think we should sing happy birthday to Wilma, don't you? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Wilma. Happy birthday to you. That's, there we go. Gotcha. At this time, I am pleased to present to you the percussion group, music class from Lindeman Elementary School and their teacher who's going to make a special presentation to us tonight.
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to play. We are Lindeman Elementary and we are drum. Drum stands for discipline, respect, unity through music. This is a special ensemble that meets before school. People meet before school once a week for twenty-five minutes. And they come before school on Wednesdays, perform all rehearsals. On Monday and Friday, they have open rehearsals, so most of these students come to come in and play music and try different parts out, and some come after school on different days. So we're sharing with you some of our music that we practice. I hope you enjoy. And without further ado, please to report players. Can I think of a better way to start for this piece? Dr. Burkhart, who is art superintendent and is a big supporter of the arts. And so last year, we received all these tubanas that you see in front of you. So we're going to do a piece now called "Soda Pop." And if you listen, this is a piece based on words, on poetry. So if you listen, you'll hear the words in there. Enjoy "Soda Pop." Coca-Cola shot him down. Doctor Pepper fixed him up while drinking a bottle of 7-Up. As you can see, one of the things that drums really foster is a sense of community. When students play drums, they naturally have to work together, they naturally have to cooperate. Our students are responsible for the music. You see, they're responsible for how the music comes together. If you got to see some of the warm-ups, a lot of times I'm asking, okay, who starts first? What comes first? And the students are responsible for creating the music, are taking ownership of the music. This is another piece where the students have worked, the students have created a drum part for this piece. And they also worked out, learn all the different live drum pieces. This is a piece, a Zimbabwe live drum piece called "Sign." Are you ready?
Thank you.
Excellent job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for sharing your talents with us.
For our live town, thank you, parents, for your continued support of our music program.
Thank you.
Good job, good job.
Students.
We just need some palm trees and sunshine now.
You're carrying your instrument, your drums, and off you play. You're carrying your instrument and you're going to walk around this place. While your instrument around this place.
The music does make me pick up palm trees.
Oh, I know. Where's the sunshine?
And, and boat tricks.
Yeah. And you look out the window and, duh. Wish no dancing tonight.
There you go, John. Thank you. It was live on the cable and live on the internet tonight. Do you record it? And that, folks, is what happens when University of Cincinnati College Conservatory of Music comes to Lindeman Elementary School, or their teacher is a graduate of CCM. Okay, Chief Fields. Let's get back on our agenda. We have a special presentation.
Joel Shepard, he's getting his ten-year pin tonight. Some of you don't know him from being around here for ten years. Joel was, we were lucky enough to get Joel when we had the merger with Crescent Springs. One of the main things with Crescent Springs was, on their side of it, was their officers needed more ability to flourish in their careers and have a chance for advancement and do other things. I'm going to say this, half the kids that were just in here are Joel's students. Joel was our new dare teacher. Joel has flourished. Out of all the Crescent Springs officers that came here, I'll say Joel has taken on the role of the Earlanger Police Department and has flourished. He started our chaplain program, doing things like just offering this, him and his wife, Cheryl, sitting back there. They came up with this first idea the second Christmas they were here. Said, you know, the officers and their wives, they work different times, so can they go Christmas shopping? And what would they have to do with the kids? So they set it up so that we could have babysitting. And they volunteered, them, and they did con some of us, other ones, into babysitting also. But set it up with the Earlanger Christian Church where we use that facilities, and our officers and telecommunications could go out Christmas shopping and leave their kids here. It was an idea that was great, it was bonding for the department, it was a very good thing for them to do. Done spaghetti dinners. And I can't tell you on the chaplaincy side of this what it's meant for us, just to go and do death notifications. Joel goes to every one of those things, and it's a very, very difficult task. He embraces it to help his fellow officers do those kind of things. This year, when we lost Tasha Humphrey to the FBI, Joel stepped up and said, I taught there before, I'd like to do it again. So we had extended.
Virginia.
We all, Virginia. North Carolina, Virginia was close. He went to Virginia, they had to get the training there, the new updated training. I went to the first air graduation, Arnett, the first class that Joel had done. So the very first thing I did was I went and asked Mr. Engel, the principal, I said, well, how'd it go this year? He said it was the best he'd ever had. Said this was the very best class they'd ever had. And I'd never had students come up to me and then, and they asked, they said, can we make a statue of him? So just, just to tell you the kind of effort that he's put into this program, we've had a lot of dare officers in this department. I've been to a lot of dare graduations, and I've never seen students embrace anybody that's been in that role like they have this man right here. And he has brought more to this department from that than anything I can say. I can't tell you how lucky we are to have him. I'm hoping that he stays around a little longer. I think he might. But Joel, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Good luck. Thank you.
Want to say a word, Joel?
Oh. Normally, they don't give me a mic. My wife always said I couldn't be a preacher because I wouldn't have anybody in the congregation because everybody would go, ooh, it's time to go to lunch. I will, I will add one thing. I have nothing but respect for the city of Earlanger. And I have nothing but respect for my friend and my mentor and a guy that I would say is just a tremendous leader of men in Chief Fields. And he, he's made all these things very easy to do. One of the things that he allowed me to do when I came here was get onto the honor guard. And Lindeman, who you just saw here, and it's back there, and I'm trying to choke back tears because these are my kids and I'm so proud of them like I am my own children. But there's so many of these kids here who are now in what we call the leaders of Lindeman, who raise the flag in the morning. It was something that Principal Shires and Pam Boyle came up with, but raise the flag in the morning and lower it at the end of the day just to teach children the importance of patriotism at a time when our country could use so much more of that. And these children now come out and they raise the flag and they lower it and they fold it. And allowing me to be on the honor guard gave me a great opportunity to teach that to them. But when my wife went through cancer a couple of years ago, to have my boss walk up to me and say, whatever you need, that's more than any amount of money you could ever pay me. So it's been an honor. I wish all ten years were here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel. That is all of these special presentations. Given the fact that we had a musical performance and there's supposed to be snow, there would be no mayor's report. We'll move right on to the reports of standing committees, public safety, and police. Ms. Pitts.
Okay. Everybody should have received their genuine report via email. There was a slight increase in our calls for service. This was largely due to weather, where there was a twenty percent over last year traffic collisions. Kyle Fordbury, who currently is a dispatcher in our center, has passed all the testing and will transfer to police recruit effective March twenty-third. They'll begin the police academy on March twenty-fifth. Our current recruit testing continues with the physical agility test being administered this Saturday, March ninth, beginning at nine a.m. Also this Saturday, assessors from the state will do, will be here to do our final accreditation walkthrough. If all goes well, we'll be accredited for another five hours. We did receive a Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services grant to reimburse us for half the cost associated with the accreditation process. In addition to this, we had a cleanup committee meeting last Monday. Daryl and Mark have been extremely busy, so we're requesting to have two ordinances re-looked at, sorry. Frank, the first one is the garbage can ordinance. The ordinance is fine, but they need a definition for front yard. There's, I guess, some interpretations, so they just need that, a definition on that. The other ordinance was the one for the unsolicited advertisements that was voted on, I believe, in January. We would like to put that back in committee and revisit that. The way it's written now, Daryl and Mark cannot possibly keep up with it. And they have a few ideas, they're going to come to our committee meeting, and they have a few ideas just to put in there that might help them out, but still get our goal that we want.
That'll be on the nineteenth.
The nineteenth, okay. And Chief Fields is in the house.
Chief Fields.
I have nothing else to add. He said that it would be five years and not five hours.
Did I say hours?
I thought you said hours. No, it's five years.
I could have very well.
Any questions of the committee or the chief? Next is Public Safety Fire EMS, Ms. Skidmore, Mr. Dunhoff.
All right. Fire EMS emergency activity. The fire EMS department made a total of three hundred fifty-nine responses for the month, which were a hundred and fourteen fire incidents and two hundred and forty-five EMS patients' dispatches during the month of January. There were nine reported fires in the city of Earlanger and a total of one hundred and five non-fire rescue events during the month. EMS responses included a total of a hundred and thirty-five transported, twenty-seven treated with no transport, and eighty-one canceled miscellaneous dispatches during the month. As always, if you want to read these reports, you can go online and read to your heart's content.
Okay, I got a Mark Stewart request. Mark sent me a letter, he'd like to have a committee meeting set up on the nineteenth to discuss the tax amendment change on the Dixie Highway, and I'd like to put that in our committee.
That'll be on the nineteenth also.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Chief Schockers?
Just, Chief Schockers is in the house.
Our fearless leaders and others are in Chicago where it's getting like five to ten right now.
You don't want to ever get to twelve, so you see what happens.
Well, they're used to that.
They already have ten.
They already have ten. Any questions of Chief Schockers or the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public works. Mr. Kayle, Mr. Brown.
Yes, actually, our public work team is getting ready and gearing up for this evening. So the report was sent out by Mr. Bogart, and Ed is in the house to answer any questions on that.
Any questions? Mr. Brown, you have anything?
Just a couple things to highlight, Mr. Mayor. Since Ed is in the gallery, I wanted to highlight that he is now a certified playground safety inspector, completed his course in certification, so congratulations there. And also want to say that I have the pleasure of spending the day with Ed, Dale Wilson, and Mr. Bogart at KLC City Day. And certainly while our day wasn't that exciting, the insight I got from spending with them was certainly well worth the time spent.
The email I got from Rick was that the crew is coming in at midnight tonight?
Or sooner if needed.
Or sooner if needed, that's right. So they're sitting on pins and needles and waiting for the white death, waiting for the white death to descend upon us tonight. Any questions at committee, or ahead?
We need to stretch the waiver application.
Did you want to bring that up? We agreed to do nothing, didn't we?
Yeah, I think we're just going to keep it as it is and not do anything.
Yeah, that was, no need to do a motion to do nothing. So there's, there's no recommendation to change anything.
It was all that, I just wanted to make sure we get the highlights.
Very good. Any questions? All right, moving on to the administration. Mr. Burke, Mr. Longshore.
I have a lot here to read. Dear Missy, please accept this letter as my three-week notice of resignation. My last day of work will be Sunday, March twenty-four, two thousand thirteen, at the Easter event at Earlanger Library. While I have been very satisfied at the city of Earlanger, I have decided to make this move to advance my career. I have enjoyed working with you and appreciate the opportunities I have been given here. I will do my best to hand off my current projects prior to March twenty-second. Please let me know if you need my help in any other way. Faith Woods.
All right.
Let's see. What else? We got a report on the meetings, the nine-eleven funding. I think everybody was for it. As long as we can get that going.
Get ready to do the ordinances and go through the process.
Yeah, if everybody's still in agreement.
Okay.
And David, we have a, nothing on that, just that word from the phone that was here that week. So that's all I've got.
There's a steering committee, is it next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
On Commonwealth Station, the steering committee meeting next Tuesday.
Well, with that resignation, there is a position open administrative assistant human resources here at City. Look at, Ms. Sanders is in the house.
Missy.
And Missy.
Any questions of the committee, or Miss Sanders or David?
Nope.
Nope. Moving on to finance, Mr. Hyer, Mr. Blankenship.
We have a finance committee meeting on Saturday, February sixteenth. During the meeting, the preliminary budget for fiscal year two thousand fourteen and amended budget for fiscal year two thousand thirteen were presented. Since that time, the finance department staff has met with each of the department heads and are in the process of updating all of the revisions made during those meetings. There'll be some additional meetings with department heads and the mayor in the next couple of weeks. And we'd also like a committee meeting with the finance committee on March nineteenth, where they'll update counts on the stash of the budget for three-year plan.
Okay, so we have three on the nineteenth.
And there is also a committee meeting on the city coordinator description, and we just want to report progress in there, and so we're moving along with that. And Greg Engelman is not in the house, so if anybody has any questions for the finance committee, just let us know.
If you have any questions for Greg, let us know, we'll get into it.
Exactly.
Any question for the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to the friendship, city networking. Ms. Kayle, Ms. Scott.
Yes, we have very short report. First of all, we had another successful Valentine's Day event at the library. There were over a hundred eighty people present, and Goldie the Clown and her associates, and we had face painting and so many compliments from parents, grandparents, and the kids that, they're so appreciative of all the events that Earlanger does sponsor, so great success. And Ms. Cahill?
And I want to say, I went to the Valentine event, and it was standing room only, and Faith did an excellent job in, she has, in all the events that she has done. And the annual Easter event, which will be her last event, if you want to go, say goodbye and show up, that would be nice. The annual Easter event is at the library, and it's Sunday, March the twenty-fourth. It's from one-thirty to three. The Easter bunny will be there, and they'll take pictures with the little one. Then after you have your picture taken with the bunny, you can have times for games and crafts. Be sure to stop by the library for some Easter fun on the twenty-fourth. Becky?
Ms. Hopkins, you have anything this evening? You all know that Ms. Kayle is the godmother of city, Earlanger city events, so when she says it was good, it was really good. We were, we were all surprised that Faith decided to pursue some other option. She's, she's really served us well, and we, and she's so nice. And we're going to miss having her smiley face around here, but we understand what the things she wants to do are incompatible with what her schedule was here, so we, we wish her well and will be looking for another bright, cheery face to fill that spot. Any questions of the committee or Ms. Hopkins? You have heard the reports of standing committees, our intent, the motion to be adopted as presented, motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to reports of representatives. We have any, anybody who wants to report in any of the meetings of the groups who we participate in. Seeing none, we'll move on to reports of city operations. Mr. Vioxx is in Florida. Is there any questions for our city engineer? So I can bother him that many people by us. Hey, he, he would have felt thirty degrees warmer if he'd been here listening to the Lindeman kids play the drums, because I'm, I'm over there ready for Jimmy Buffett's Margaritaville. It was wonderful. Our city attorney, Mr. Wickman.
The only thing is that you mentioned the man.
The only thing is that you mentioned the 911 funding ordinances. We've submitted them to the utilities for their review and comment. Haven't heard anything back from them yet. I don't know if we'll get it done by the next council meeting, but hopefully, hopefully we will.
Frank sent me copies of the email to him and Rhonda Whitaker, and it was a very positive upbeat, so hopefully we'll get info back from them and we can scoop right ahead. So if we do, we'll have it here. You've heard the reports of city operations. I entertain a motion to be adopted, Ms. Kyle, second by Ms. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Does anybody have any correspondence this evening? Jerry.
The city received the following thank you from the Beadham family. To our family at the city of Erlanger, Tim and I appreciate everything you all have done for our family. The love and support has been just what we have needed to get through this difficult time in our lives. Thank you all. And Missy Andrus also received a thank you card from the Beadham family. The city received a thank you card from council member Renee Skidmore that thanked everyone for thanking of her during her time of need. And Missy Andrus received an email from Rick Bogart in which he expressed his thanks and appreciation for Rod Snow filling in during a snow event when they were short-staffed.
Speaking of snow, I'm looking out the window right now, so I'm zipping along here pretty quickly.
At least it's pretty.
Is there any other correspondence? As you all know, all of you received, the city received a letter from the judge executive, you all received copies of it, and I responded by mail to the judge executive by thanking him for his concern that we've already reduced our PSCC staff by management and personnel techniques to the level that we need to maintain it. And we would expect that the consolidated dispatch concern would consider the application of anybody who left Erlanger or any other dispatch operation who has qualifications. We think they would consider them whether or not the judge executive recommended them. Okay. We'll move on to the citizens of public comments. Has anybody signed up? Don't see anybody back there, okay. Do we have any bids this evening, Ms. Hopkins?
No, sir.
All right. Do we have any reports of work in progress this evening? Seeing none? Do we have any business, new business for the good welfare of the city? Mr. Dunhoff?
I just want to report that, like Skidney just did about the Easter event for the city of Erlanger, the early line Easter event, it's gonna be Saturday, the 30th, which will be the day before Easter, and that will start at 11:00 a.m. And be there by 11:00 a.m. because that's when they blow the horn, and within three minutes, all the candy and eggs will be picked up all crap.
And it doesn't matter how much you put out there, it's probably three minutes.
We get over 3,000 pieces of candy from Van Malen, put that out there along with another thousand or 2,000 plastic eggs, in three minutes. I mean, and we give away 40 baskets and it's just, so that is, like I said, the 30th at 11:00 a.m.
So get your rabbit outfit on, just like the Christmas story and.
It takes us longer to put it out than it does.
Any other new business? Legislation, Mr. Wickman.
Yes, sir. The first ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, repealing in their entirety the existing text of the flood clean regulations in section 9.24 of the Erlanger zoning ordinance, and adopting a new flood clean regulations to comply with paragraph 60.3d of the National Flood Insurance Program Regulations. By summary, we have in our existing zoning ordinance all of requirements to comply with the National Flood Insurance Program. They are prepared and monitored by the staff of the planning commission. Apparently, there have been some amendments to those federal regulations that require us to scrap what's there now and to substitute for that the text that is attached to the ordinance.
Motion would be to adopt an order published. Motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Ms. Pitts. Any discussion? Roll call, bud.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Longshore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries all eyes. I will sign the ordinance. Mr. Wickman.
Next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, repealing sections two and three of ordinance 2265 regarding the termination of Erlanger employees and non-elected officers. By summary, the ordinance terminates the restrictions on the mayor's authority to terminate employees at will.
We had some discussion about that ordinance, and before we present it this evening, I'm gonna ask the opinion of council, do we want to go ahead and take a vote on this or go ahead and table it? We can vote on it, if it gets voted down, that's okay with me. I just wanted to, it's here tonight. Okay, the motion is to approve an order published.
Or if it dies in the lack of motion?
If it dies in the lack of motion, we're done with it. Seeing the motion, it's done. Okay. So motion was, I was entertaining a motion to adopt this ordinance and order it published. If there's no motion, it's done.
What's done, meaning done instead of?
Meaning done, it means that this permutation of the ordinance will not pass.
It can be put on the table.
It can be put on the table, it can be go back to committee.
That's what we want. We want it back to committee.
I'm waiting for a motion for somebody to put it someplace. Motion by Ms. Skidmore.
I'd like to put it back in committee, the ordinance on hiring and firing of non-elected city employees.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion by Mr. Longshore, second by Mr. Longshore. Very good. Any discussion? That requires a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. It's back in committee? Do you all want to try to stick a fourth committee on the 19th or do it on the fourth Tuesday this month? We already have three for the 19th. We could squeeze it.
Well, ours won't, the one I'm having won't last for about a couple days.
I don't think ours will last long.
We'll schedule for the 19th, and then we'll see where it goes from there. Okay, very good.
NCU will turn this over.
That's right. Mr. Wickman, is there any other legislation?
No, sir.
Okay, that's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all.